...meeting at 7:07 if you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item up on our agenda is a special presentation, something that goes this way. And if I can get Sean, Anne, Julie Barris, Mary Colton, and Jerry Musley to join me up here.
I know we all like to be together. Come on over here. So you all might have realized that as you went by O'Brien Park on September 25th Saturday, and we had published the Mayor's Day of Service. And it was an opportunity, it was by these two women over here in conjunction with our staff, to get out on the trails, to clean up trash, to make Parker beautiful that day. So what I didn't anticipate was the power that these two women had. As I turned into O'Brien Park and saw about 750 people crowding the park, ready to get out there and serve, and then probably what another 250 had already gone out on the trail. So I think the counts were around 1,000 for that day. So our town, we ended up picking five truckloads, six truckloads of garbage off the trails. Now, I have to say though, to the credit of our Parks and Recreation Department, they have a lot of trouble finding trash on the trails themselves. So they went up into the shopping centers, they went into Raleigh Downs Neighborhood, and they found plenty of trash everywhere. I think some of them, especially they were at Triple Bar Park, they were like bringing trash in there. Because they had some huge, huge trash. But I just want to say, you know, this was an inaugural event, and even though it had the mayor's name on it, it was these four individuals and your amazing team that made it happen. And I also, beyond being remiss to not acknowledge Mr. Dave Crandall, President, South Parker State, with us too, who was an integral part. So for all of you, for Sean, for Julie, and then for our Parks and Recreation staff, in recognition of your organization and contribution to the Mayor's Day of Service. So thank you all. Sean, that's your words.
On behalf of your team, thank you guys. And Julie, thank you. And we're going to get some pictures with the council here?
Dave has the downward shot.
I was right behind him.
Dave, come on, get it here. Just don't stand next to me.
Guys.
We look forward to the 2022 Mayor's Day of Service. I have feelings it's going to be a little bit bigger and a little bit wider spread than ever. So, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Danette. All right, next up on our agenda is a monthly update from the Parker Chamber of Commerce. Guys, welcome.
Good evening, Council. TJ Sullivan, President and CEO of the Parker Chamber of Commerce. It's good to be with you here tonight. Thank you for not having a federal holiday this month. Much appreciated. Since I last saw you, we had two after-hours networking events, one with Core Electric Cooperative, and another with Ride &amp; Joy, a local window tinting company. We had three ribbon cuttings and 16 new members. So things are going pretty well. We welcomed a small convention of Santa Clauses to Parker, and we hosted a business services informational breakfast at the library. We had more than 2,500 people enjoying downtown Parker at our four summer wine walks. I've met all but one council member face-to-face, but Council Member Barrington and I are going clubbing later this month, so I'm looking forward to that. So more importantly, I've been out getting, I've been getting out and meeting our members, and I wanted to use my time tonight to introduce you, introduce one of our members to you. Dr. Lauren Vaughtier is a physical therapist and owner of Onward Denver, located on Pony Express Drive. Lauren specializes in the treatment of pelvic health, pregnancy, and postpartum recovery, athletic recovery, and chronic pain. Lauren is a Chicago native who received her four-year degree in biological sciences from DePaul University, and earned her doctorate in physical therapy from the University of Michigan, where she received recognition for clinical excellence. Lauren is a Lone Tree resident who chose to open her practice in Parker in early 2021. I thought my time might be used best tonight by giving her a moment to let you know how her new Parker business is coming along. Dr. Lauren Vaughtier.
Thank you for that introduction. And I recognize the mayor.
Welcome, welcome.
Yes, thank you so much. Like he said, Onward Denver is a fitness-forward physical therapy clinic with our focus on pelvic health. We do treat orthopedic conditions as well. But when I first moved here, I was struggling to meet people, and I met Kara through Jeff Sams, and he recommended that I join the chamber. And it has been such an altruistic way for me to tap into the town, meet other local small business owners, and really get my roots planted. So I'm so glad to be part of the chamber. You guys did a ribbon cutting for me that was super successful. And our business, I've already hired another employee. It was just me in January, and I've since hired someone. So we're growing at a very rapid pace, even talking about a second location. So I'm so proud to be part of this community and so grateful. Thank you.
That's awesome. Great story. Thank you for being here. Council questions, any?
No, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no questions.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Continued success.
Thank you.
And tell your husband we said hi.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, TJ. Next up, Downtown Business Alliance updates. Doing his best zombie crawl to the podium here is Omar Castillo.
We really need to work on that walk-up music. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. It's nice to finally be up here. It's been a while since I've been up here, so it's nice to see you all. It's glad to see everybody. So Omar Castillo, the Treasurer with the DBA. I've missed being up here, so thank you for having us for this month to give you the monthly update. So what have we been up to? I know I've been getting that asked a lot, but a lot of good things, a lot of great things for this community. First off, as you guys all know, we just finished up our first annual Sticks and Sign Golf Tournament, where we had well over 100 players. We had a great networking event afterward, and folks stuck around until 6:30 is what I'm told. So it was a great after-party and all that good stuff that was there. Mayor, you had signed up to play on my team. I know you showed up for three holes and then sent Richen to play for your behalf. I'm glad you, I'm glad you did.
That was charity for you. That was charity.
Yeah, that helped us out quite a bit. So we appreciate that. But we're already planning for next year's event, and we hope to make this one of our annual fundraisers like we've done in the past. So going forward, we're already starting to plan the next one, getting some great feedback from the people who participated in the event and all that good stuff. Next, but not least, our highly anticipated Zombie Crawl slash Trick or Treat Street event that's coming up. So we're in full planning mode, doing that right now with our marketing team within the DBA. We're working really closely with Dean and Peg and the town as well to make sure we, you know, this comes off. Having weekly conference calls, sometimes two or three conference calls a week with Dean and Peg and with other folks within the marketing committee. We just want to make sure this goes really well. So, and you know, that's the thing. People want to see events. People want to see things go on downtown. People want to do things. So we're getting a lot of community support. We're getting a lot of people that are helping us out with this great event, calling us and asking, how can they be a part of it, which is, which is really good. So Trick or Treat Street, just so you guys know, runs from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM on that Saturday, followed by the Zombie Crawl from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I'm sure the zombies will be out all night. Just the Zombie Crawl will be a little bit more of an adult-friendly event with after-parties up and down Main Street at all your restaurants and bars. So getting a lot of support from our restaurants and bars up along Main Street. The great thing about Trick or Treat Street that's going to be different this year than the years in the past, we're going to take this clear down to West Main. So we've got the west side of West Main being involved. We've got Crossroads Shopping Center being involved. So we've got a lot of great participation already for that, and people are excited. So for those of you that have had kids in the past, when we had it on the east side of Main Street, you guys know it would bunch up, right? So you'd be waiting 15, 20 minutes for a Smarties candy, right? So now we're going to take it clear down to the other end, and we're going to have a lot more participation. So we get less people stuck over here on the east side and more over the west side. And then the last thing that we're looking for is we're looking for some requests for some drama clubs to help us out with some of the acting, some of the cool things we got going on there, and to make it fun as well. And then if you also go to downtownparker.com, the website is up, so we're looking for a few sponsors for the event. This isn't a fundraiser for us. We're not doing this to raise money. We're not doing any of that stuff. We're doing this for the community. The fundraising that's involved in this part of it is to help us cover our costs. So you have a main event sponsor, you have a west-side sponsor, and then you have an east-side sponsor as well. So great things. We're getting a lot of feedback from that as well. So if you guys know of anybody who's willing to sponsor, this is just to cover our costs. Like I said, not a fundraiser for us by no means. And then the last thing that we're going to be doing in the month, in this month of October, will be surveying both members and non-members of the downtown business area regarding business improvements that they would like to see themselves. Then what we're going to do is we're going to have Downtown Colorado Inc. be our guest speaker at our November 10th meeting at Deep Space. This will be a Town Hall-style meeting where we will have Downtown Colorado Inc. as an expert discussing our survey results and then taking questions from those in attendance. So sorry it took so forever, but what can I answer for you?
There's a lot going on. Laura, any questions? Ian? John?
I just want to thank Omar from breaking away from the Eagles tour to come join us back in Parker. I noticed the Eagles are playing the 12th in Sacramento, so I can only imagine you're going to be on that West Coast tour.
Could be. Could be. Don has my number, so I'm just waiting for him to call.
It's amazing over the years hearing about the Zombie Crawl. It's actually going to happen. So kudos to you and Tony.
Thank you. Thank you. A lot of, well, it's just, you know, thank you, Todd, but you know, it's been the whole DBA, and that's the cool thing about this organization. It's a bunch of volunteers, all have full-time jobs, no paid staff, and we're pulling off these great events. And so, thank you. Thank you for the recognition, Todd. Thank you.
Josh? Omar, I had the opportunity to sit down with Chris Hudson and discuss the upcoming projects and the timeline and, you know, details and whatnot. And I was wondering, if possible, maybe you and Chris can chat real quick here. But getting the town in front of the DBA, maybe in the October meeting, if there's a little room, maybe 15 minutes, if that's a possibility?
Yes, we will. We're actually going to have Beau for our October meeting.
Perfect.
And then, but yeah, absolutely.
Can we get Engineering to tag along a little bit?
Actually, I've been working with Krishnail on getting Weldy in front of them when she has renderings.
And I think that was probably like that November, December, maybeish.
Correct. Yes. And my microphone's super loud.
I know.
Yeah.
DJ. Thank you.
I think she got the mayor's mic tonight. Thanks, Omar. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks. See you guys.
All right, next up is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak to items not on the agenda. There are three ways to provide public comment. One is by email to the town clerk's office by 5:00 on the day of the meeting. Second is by Zoom, and third is right here in the room. So I'll start in that reverse order. If there's anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda, seeing none. Danette, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No comments.
And we received none via email today. So it's a good sign. Item number six, report item and comments from mayor and council. I will start to my right with Councilman Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Busy couple of weeks. I think, I'll keep it short. The highlight for me was CML, Colorado Municipal League Convention up in Westminster. Got to meet a lot of other local leaders, went to quite a few great sessions, some maybe not so great, but still, I definitely enjoyed my time. Got to get to know the mayor better, got to know Ms. Barrington better, and of course, John and I were up there together. So it was just a really good, a good event. I have had the opportunity to attend in the past, but I'm going to find myself hard-pressed to miss it next year. So really enjoyed it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of meeting TJ from the Chamber of Commerce last week. It was a good meeting. Thank you. Also had my first meeting as a voting member for the Legend High School School Accountability Committee. I approved the Cal Coast book, so sorry, students. And finally, this weekend, Parker Senior Center is doing a shred-a-thon in conjunction with the Police Department at Salisbury Park, 9:00 AM, I believe. So please go out and support them. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, as Councilmember Rivero indicated, a few of us were up at CML. Always a good event. It's great to listen and learn from other subject matter experts around the region and reconnect or connect with newly-elected officials so we can further the discussion. That day, I also attended Bike to Work. It was a Dr. Cog-sponsored event. But the town of Parker had their, their space just south of E470, right by the disc golf course and Corporal Zonka Park. Much thanks to staff. Brooke, Ryan, Sidney were there, and the rest of the setup, tear-down staff. A great event. It was a little cold at the beginning, but kind of warmed up. So that was good. E470 on the 23rd, I had a Finance Committee meeting. We talked about the budget review, which we will bring to the board on October 14th. In addition, we talked about cash flows and toll rate discussion to set policy for the 2022 toll rates. Had a little bit of a spoiler there. We're looking to start the descent of toll rates. So that'll be also discussed on the 14th. 23rd, I attended with Public Works Director Tom Williams, the Advancing Lincoln Avenue Project Kickoff Meeting. It was virtual. That is basically at the corridor of Lincoln Road from Parker Road to the I-25 interchange. So good things are about to happen there. E470, I had a meeting with Executive Director Tim Stewart on the 27th. I also had an executive, E470 and HPTE discussion. HPT is a subdivision, or a subsidiary, or a fund enterprise. I don't really know exactly what, what subdivision they are, but they are under, or within CDOT. They do all the hot lanes and managed lanes throughout Colorado. They use E470 or Express Toll as their back office. And we had a discussion regarding our tolling services agreement, what to do for the next three to five years, because their contract or agreement with E470 is soon approaching. In addition, I took mom to the Oak Ridge Boys last night. Sold-out event. Good to see everybody in, at Pace Center, enjoying, enjoying what we have to offer there at the Pace Center. So thank you to Cultural Department, Carrie and staff. A great time had by all. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Barrington.
Thank you, Mayor. So it has been a really busy couple of weeks, but it's been a lot of fun. Again, I was at that CML conference also, and it was just great to get to meet other council members and mayors and staff, and just learning about what other municipalities are doing. One of my favorite sessions was learning about how a municipality was handling their mental health calls. So I learned a lot from that. And then also attended, last week, the MHC Metro Housing Coalition Forum. And that's about all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Rehfta.
I too attended the Colorado Municipal League. I had the opportunity to attend it over Zoom since I was out of town for two days, and I can tell you that that works very effectively as well. And I also met with some constituents on local matters. They had some questions of me. And I just would like to state that October is Learning Disabilities Awareness Month.
Awesome. Thank you. Just a couple of items. For me, obviously, as we had the presentation today, the Mayor's Day of Service was a huge success on Saturday. No, no thanks to me. But, but to the people that were up here and the nearly 1,000 people that came out, I really appreciated it, and it was a good event. Right after that, I went to the Society of Santas, hosted by the Chamber, and that was an amazing event to see 20-plus Santas filling up Main Street. One did ask me to resign, but I think I got back on the nice list after a while. So it was, it was good. And then I headed up to Aurora for Hero Fest, sponsored by Canvas, to step in for Mayor Coughlin, who couldn't make it. Then this weekend, I emceed a fundraiser for Project Healing Waters, which takes veterans out, teaches them how to tie fish, or tie flies, and takes them out fly fishing, where we raised nearly $100,000 at that event. So that was good. And then I attended on Sunday with Councilman Rivero, Councilman Dyak, Gary Lassiter, who is the fourth mayor of Parker, attended his memorial service. And just in closing here, I would like to pay my respect, my kudos, to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners on the creation of the Douglas County Department of Health. They had their first meeting on the 30th, and well on our way to local control. So to Abe, Laura, and George, thank you so much for taking care of this county. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on consent agenda unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have items 7A through G, including a proclamation on Community Planning Month. John Fuza, this is your month. So congratulations on that. So I'll entertain a motion unless there's any questions on A through G.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve items 7A through 7G, please. A second?
Motion was made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote when the prompt comes up. And the consent calendar passes on a motion of four to one with John Dyak voting no. Next up is item eight, Resolutions. Resolution number 21-021, a resolution to establish the process for administering the kiosk program as outlined in Section 10.13.080 of the Town of Parker Municipal Code. Mr. Fuza.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. And we'll wait. I have a brief presentation for you, which is spooling up as we speak. All right, thank you, Danette. And if you would just, I guess, advance to the second slide, please. Thank you, Mayor and council. I've been in front of you on the town's proposed and planned residential sign kiosk program several times, most recently September 13th of this year or so, about three weeks ago, with our partner, National Sign Plazas. So you'll recall that the purpose of this program is to provide for a comprehensive and planned approach to private residential home builder signage in the town. When we did appear and present to you on September 13th, Town Council asked for four specific elements of direction with regard to this plan and program, and received that direction. And you have that on the screen in front of you, and summarized as follows. Our first request was to obtain input about the design and, and planning of the program, including sign locations. And thank you, we did receive that direction. Council decided of the three alternatives presented, council perverted sign option number three, and we'll show that in a moment. And among the color alternatives shown, there was a clear preference for the use of kind of a green color palette, incorporating green as the predominant color. The second major element of direction that we asked for and received was direction to proceed from preliminary design, which we showed you on September 13th, to final design. And that final design process is underway with National Sign Plazas. The town's contracted a private sector partner and vendor for the project. The third element of direction that we asked for and received was authorization for staff to have approval of final design, subject to addressing and incorporating Town Council comments. And we received that direction. You selected a sign alternative option or alternative three, a green color palette. You expressed your preference as to how home builders would present their name and logo on the sign panels. And so we're proceeding with that direction, subject to administrative approval of final design by staff. Remember, a final design simply is design documentation for the most part, and is always consistent with preliminary design, which you've reviewed, approved, and given direction to move forward with. And then lastly, we asked for the fourth and final element of direction at the September 13th study session, and that was the ability, if you supported the project, and was to proceed with Resolution now number 21-021, to be placed on the Town Council agenda for this meeting, October 4th, which is why we're here. for this meeting, October 4th, which is why we're here and why I'm in front of you. That resolution briefly is required by the municipal code at section 10 point 13 point 080, kiosk program. By code, it's supposed to summarize the process for administering the kiosk program, including but not limited to design, location of signs, required permits, how to participate, et cetera, which is why the resolution is fairly lengthy. I think it clocks in at six or seven pages with exhibits. The resolution is intended to support program operations, which with your support and approval of the resolution would proceed, and they would be on a largely or entirely administrative basis, as currently structured, with final design having administrative approval by staff, again, subject to your direction, given on September 13th. Location plan required approvals and permits, of which there are multiple inspections by staff, and then any future changes as developments are completed and signs are moved around for sign locations to be reviewed and approved by town, but at the staff level. Thank you, Danette. If you would just advance to the next slide. So, what I'm showing you here, based on your input and direction on September 13th at the study session, is the progress drawing as we move from preliminary design to final design for the large two-post sign. This sign is design option number three, which you, council, expressed a clear preference for. You'll notice it kind of has a little bit of an old-fashioned look. It has the kind of the cutout corners. It has the town logo at top. This is the official town-approved logo, as well as one of our taglines, your kind of place. And then it has the panels, and you'll notice quite a bit of green in the sign per your direction. So, we're still working through that, but this is kind of the next iteration from what we showed you on September 13th, as we progress through the final design process. Thank you, Danette. This image in front of you that I'm showing you is the progress drawing for the smaller one-post sign. Again, same design theme. This is design option three, but just rendered smaller with a single-post logo at top for the town, tagline at the bottom, cutout or kind of rounded, inversely rounded edges, and again, green is the predominant color palette, again, which you expressed a clear preference for. So, with that, thank you, Danette. And then finally, before we get to the last slide, this shows the progress plan, which is the, which you have in your packet and you have on your screen, shows, still a work in progress, shows the likely, and as of today, proposed locations of various kiosk signs, all directing to active, either under-construction residential developments in town, or approved residential developments shortly to go to construction. Thank you, Danette. And with that, the staff recommendation is for approval. I do want to point out, and you'll see, the recommended resolution has been revised from the very simple recommendation for approval that you have in your council action form. Just to provide clarifying language, should you be comfortable with it on administrative approval of final design? So, the staff recommendation is for approval, and the recommended motion is, I move to approve resolution 21 point or dash 021, subject to the following condition. Section three of Exhibit A, excuse me, shall be revised by the addition of the following language. The illustrations on Exhibit 1A are preliminary and shall be revised and approved as to or in final form by the Community Development Director prior to placement, placement meaning installation. With that, I'm done. If you support that recommendation, happy to take comments, questions, and discussion.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
And Danette, can we make sure that recommendation comes about after we get through public comment and stuff? Okay, perfect. So, questions for Director Fuza? Let's start with John.
In the study session, I attempted to create some observations and questions, and I am design challenge mayor, so I will yield the floor to my other council members.
Councilmember Barrington.
Yeah, in the study session, it was pretty unanimous that we all liked the third option, and just being in this industry, not only is it going to help the public as a wayfinder, but it definitely helps real estate agents as well, so we're not getting lost. And I, just the fact that it's going to decrease the sign clutter, I think it's a really nice-looking, attractive sign, and you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And supporting her meaningful green color tonight, Councilmember Hefta.
I just want to thank you, John, for working so hard on this. And as I was driving through Castle Rock, I noticed that they have a similar sign program, but their color scheme is much different. They have different colored signs on them. And so, I think as folks are moving into town, they'll be able to stop, maybe take a picture of the sign, slow down, trying to find out where they're going, and not be confused with this new program. Instead of a lot of the signs all over the place, I think they'll have greater direction for finding their new home in Parker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you, John. Like the rest of the council, I like the design, and looks, as my dad would say, smart.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you coming in front of us. I appreciate your motion. Danette, can you pull up the sign, please? So, I think, you know, we've always, as good of friends we are, we've always had a little bit of difference on administrative approval. Is the green we're looking at around the border, is that Parker green?
So, it's one of the town-approved and used colors, both of those are.
Okay.
And different, you'll notice the bottom kind of bar with FHW guide green. That's the regulatory green for traffic and traffic control signage.
We have to stay away from that.
We have to stay away, put up there so you can see the contrast and the difference.
I think my concern, as always with administrative approval, is the decision lies with one person, but the onus lies with seven. And then that's where I get into an issue, that this is what town wanted, this is what the council wanted, this is what the citizens wanted through their council. My concern comes that when the decision comes to it, that you have now, or your department has the power to change what we decided upon, whether it be for monetary reasons, whether it be for other reasons, without this council ever seeing it again. And I've always expressed that with you, and I think we've always gone toe-to-toe about, you know, administrative approval versus public hearings. And so, I just worry that there is too much out there still to be decided for this council to just give it away, is kind of my thing. Because we did have a great debate. I mean, we went through whether it should be blue, whether it should be green, the post should look like the lamp posts. I mean, it was a lot of detailed thing, and what we're doing tonight is saying, that's wonderful, take it into account, but ultimately, it comes down to what you think, or what is available without this council ever hearing it again, correct?
So, it could be that way. But that's, again, and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Rivera, that's not typically how we operate. We're in front of the council frequently, both at regular business meetings and in the work sessions, the study sessions. And I think we are, if that is something that you're not comfortable with or not supportive of, I certainly respect that, and as staff, we follow the council's direction as a body. I'm certainly happy, if that was an issue, we can commit to updating council. What we can do, council can decide it doesn't want to approve the resolution, and then we kind of will have to figure out where we are, and perhaps pause and start again. Council can decide it wants final approval over final design. I would, from the stamp, from the planning perspective, I would argue that final design here is really design documentation. The council has already given its, made its decisions on a preliminary design basis as to the sign design with the cutout corners. Throughout two alternatives, the one on the screen is the one that council decided it wanted, it wanted to advance. It's really design documentation, so if the council wants to get into that level of operational detail as to fasteners, concrete footings, whether it's, you know, distance from the right-of-way line and the like, you can do that, but I would recommend against.
No, and I think that, no, absolutely, point taken. We're layman, and proudly, we leave that up to the experts. I think that what I'm guarding against, in my opinion, is that council went through an exercise during study session, and we just want to make sure that, in my opinion, I just want to make sure that that exercise carries weight with your going forward, that your decisions, and I do trust your department, and you stated it very well, you would never do that. You know, you would come in front of us if there was drastic changes that needed to be made, and I think that's, I just want to put that on the record.
And I appreciate that. And if, Councilmember Rivera and the council, if you would like updates, so again, you could, you can decide to approve the resolution, modify the resolution, or decline the resolution. But if you're willing to approve it, I can certainly commit to, if you'd like, having periodic updates as we go through the final design process, to show you the refinements of the sign design with regard to that. I mean, that's a lot of green up there, and we probably all have, there are different ways to mix and match it. I would be happy if you thought it was appropriate, and you were willing, and would be if you wanted to approve the resolution, I can certainly commit to updating the council, perhaps its study session, periodically with any refinements as we move towards final design, so that we, you not only say it, but we at the staff level, as is our job, can take your input, comments, and further direction with regard to the detailing, the mix of colors and all that.
Thank you.
We're happy to do that.
I think that the majority of it, your location and all of the nuts and bolts, and you know, the fasteners are not. You know, what I'm here is, I'm trying to protect council's input as to what the sign we approved looks like, and I think that updates would satisfy my concern.
Happy to do that, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time, John.
So, I'm going to, we'll get one more chance at this. I just want to open up for public comment before we get, so I'm going to open up for public comment at 7:44. Anybody in the room wishing to make a comment on signs? Danette, do we have anybody online?
No, there are no public comments.
So, let me bring it back to the council, and so, let me just ask a kind of a leading question, Councilman Rivera. Does, if what came out into the town and the streets of Parker was just like that sign, would that, would that satisfy your concerns?
Absolutely. If it looks like that, I think that my concerns more lie with a decision process that is open-ended, and a resolution that is establishing an open-ended decision process. And then ultimately, the responsibility, when we six look at this, we say, okay, this is what we like. If it doesn't look like that, we six are responsible. The decision didn't lie with us six. We're inputting, but we're not making the final decision. So, I think that that's where I lie. I think that John, and I do trust he and his department, and I believe that they will come and update us. If there's a significant change that needs to happen, then we can readdress it at that point. This is a resolution, so I'm not that worried.
Council, anyone have that concern? Councilmember Barrington?
So, I know sometimes what you see on a computer screen and what really comes out, like the Pantones are sometimes a little bit different. Will we be able to approve, like, the actual final sign before all of them go to production?
So, the answer would be not all of them, because there, you know, there could be 30 or more than 30 signs at initial installation, but there will be, good question, we've talked to the vendor, National Sign Plazas, about that. There will be an actual sign mock-up. The actual sign will be created kind of as a mock-up for inspection by the town, by staff. If council wants to participate in that, we're happy to share that information. We'd have to work out, that could happen at their shop prior to fabrication. We can also ask them to do a field mock-up, or even just a mock-up, you know, some location in the town that's more convenient to get to. And then we can all place eyes on the sign that's mocked up, the posts, how they look, the color, the panels, and then from that, it's just the variations on a theme, whether it's a two-poster, which is the big one, or a single-poster, which is the smaller one.
One more thing. And I think, I just wanted to clarify, this is, it's revenue positive also.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's a revenue share from the private sector partner, National Sign Plazas, to the town.
All right, thanks.
John, anything else?
No, thank you.
You're standing on your design challenge, okay.
See original comments, please.
I am with you on this one. Councilmember Hendricks?
I'm good.
Okay. So, council, I think, I think, wanted, just to make a comment on this, you know, I think, as John started to talk about the bits and parts, right? So, the posts, I think, if what you see is what you get, then that's fine, is what I'm hearing from the council. I think the concern is on the variation in colors, so you want one more, maybe the actual prototype as opposed to what you're seeing on the screen, and for the director to come back and advise us on that. Does that encapsulate it?
Yeah, I wouldn't.
We're not going to take a look at all 30 signs.
No, 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 I wouldn't mind seeing, I mean, if I could just see a paint spread. I want to see actual, is what, you know, I would just like to see the greens, you know, if it's just a mock-up and it comes into a study session, and we're good to go, and we're good to go. I mean, I have no qualms about approving the resolution tonight, I just want to make sure that what we do approve, or what we did approve or suggest on Monday, is what we're going to get.
But you're not looking to debate the gradients, you just want to lay eyes on a more final product. You're not going to greener-than-green and...
A little bit more blue in this.
Yeah, okay, okay.
No, no, it's not going to happen.
Because I think we all had that, and Laura will have to study up on her color, you know, variance too, so, and John will die 100 deaths in that room, so. All right, council, I'll give it to you. Do you have a motion in your packet? You also have a motion that the director has amended for your review, so whichever route you'd path.
I will. I'm sorry, real quick, I just, real quick, sorry.
You're going back to the gradients, right?
I'm doing my best to make sure this is a little bit longer meeting than you hoped it was.
It's already gone. It's already gone.
Mr. Maloney, could you, for my edification, explain the differences between the two motions, sir?
Maybe we should have Michelle, there, I should have Michelle's mic. So, the first resolution, if approved, would limit the final design to what's in the packet and attached to the resolution. The proposed motion would give Community Development Director discretion on final design.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I will actually...
You want the out, don't you?
Propose the motion, yeah. I would like to, I move to approve the motion as presented by staff. Is that good enough for each of you?
Or do you want to read it in?
Or do we need to read it in?
Kristen, do you have the actual motion?
It's here.
Oh, yeah.
I just read it.
Is that good enough for you? Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion was made by Councilmember Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote on the staff-recommended motion. And that passes unanimously, with the caveat that you don't choose this green that's up there right now, so just heads up. Thank you, John. All right, item number 8B, resolution number 21 dash 033, a resolution to consent to the assignment and assumption agreement by Looking Glass by and between Jen Colorado 18 LLC and LB Parker Owner LLC. Mr. Maloney.
Good evening, Mayor and council. In your packet this evening is a resolution to approve an assignment and assumption agreement, along with the actual assignment and assumption agreement of the Hess Ranch Annexation Agreement. It's been fully executed by the former owner of the property, as well as the current owner of the property. By way of background, the annexation agreement for the Hess Ranch property requires the consent of the Town Council to any assignment of rights and obligations under the agreement. On February 20 of 2018, the longtime owner of the Hess Ranch property sold the land to Jen Colorado 18 LLC, and as a part of that sale, the Town Council approved the assignment and assumption of that annexation agreement, and that was to Jen Colorado 18 LLC as the purchaser. So, fast forward to this year, on August 10, 2021, Jen Colorado 18 LLC sold the land to LB Parker Owner LLC. Jen is requesting that the Town Council consent to the assignment and assumption of the annexation agreement to LB Parker Owner LLC, and then under the annexation agreement, the Town Council cannot unreasonably withhold delay or condition. council cannot unreasonably withhold, delay, or condition its consent to the assignment and assumption. So, just briefly on the transaction itself, Jen, as I indicated, sold the land to LB Parker Owner LLC. LB Parker Owner LLC is a specially-formed LLC out of the state of Delaware for the sole purpose of land banking the balance of the Hess Ranch property. LB Parker Owner LLC was formed by a group called the Rock Point Group, and this is a global real estate management firm. It's headquartered out of Boston, and it has offices, I think, throughout the country, including Dallas and San Francisco. So, to be clear, LB Parker Owner LLC, although it is the owner, it will not actually be building anything. It's simply going to be the landowner. There is a second agreement between LB Parker and Dreamfinders Homes LLC to purchase lots based upon a schedule. Dreamfinders Homes is actually going to be the builder. The reason that we have LB Parker Owner LLC owning the property is that Dreamfinders does not land-bank vacant property. They buy lots for the construction of homes, and in this case, they have a purchase agreement to buy lots from LB Parker, the current owner. To help us out in this transaction, and I think, Matt, are you here this evening? There you are. Matt, I assume is going to correct anything that I have said, but Matt has been involved in this project since 2018, and he's overseen the project, he's worked with staff to get this project moving forward, and it's making a lot of progress. My understanding, Matt is going to stay on board with this project. So, LB Parker, again, the owner, has an agreement, or will have an agreement for, with Stelivo Management LLC, and Matt is with that company, and so Matt will continue to be involved in this project, as I think the face of this project, at least for a portion of the project moving forward. So, that is the transaction itself, and that's the background, and at this point, they are requesting approval of the resolution that's before you this evening. Any questions, mayor or council?
Matt, did you want to say anything on this as a part of that? If you'll state your name and address, and the color choice of Looking Glass signs for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. My name is Matt Osborne. My company is Stelivo Management LLC. We try to get as many LLCs as possible in this transaction. Address is 4100 East Mississippi Avenue, Suite 500, Denver, Colorado 80246. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Maloney and staff for their patience. It's been, these transactions take time, and so we've been communicating on and off for about six or eight months, just on this transaction and how this was going to come about. And the reality is, you know, with the transaction, it's a new ownership group, but I'm here to reassure you, first of all, that I'm planning, for better or worse, planning to stay on with the ongoing entitlement process and development process for Looking Glass, and have a contract with LB Parker Owner to do that, at least through what we call Segment 2A, so which is effectively the second of the three phases, or three segments of the master-planning community of Looking Glass, and with the intent of going forward beyond that. But I just want to reassure council that the intent of LB Parker Owner and Dreamfinders, and I'll get into that relationship in just a minute, is to move forward with the plans that have been developed and have been submitted. So, the plans were resubmitted for Segment 2A for a sketch and preliminary plan back in August, even prior to, and had been worked on prior to the finalization of the transaction, and those are the plans that will be carried forward by the new property owner. The intent is consistency in this community. We think there's been a, and part of the reason and the value that the new property owner saw in Looking Glass was what had been established to date, both in the plan and now what has been executed and developed in the field. And so, that's important for the new ownership group, and really to build on that, you know, that foundation that's been built out at Looking Glass. And so, the intent is really to continue that vision, continue the plan, because we, and continue it not just with the vision and the plan, but really the continuation of the infrastructure, because we understand, and the new owner certainly understands the importance of the infrastructure as it relates to the town of Parker, and that means roadway infrastructure, that means open space infrastructure, that means park infrastructure. So, all those elements that have been developed by Jen over the last couple of years and working with staff is carrying that forward. And so, to the town, you should not see a difference as it relates to Looking Glass going forward. Again, I'll be kind of the front person that you'll see. We are continuing with the same engineering firm, the same land planning and landscape architecture firm. So, with all that, you should really see no difference in the execution and the communication from our team going forward as it relates to Looking Glass, because the intent is really, again, to create a community in which the property owner and Dreamfinders can be proud, but also, obviously, the town can be proud going forward, because that's really been one of the main goals that we had, we being the former property owner going forward, and so that's very important. So, just jumping back to the relationship between LB Parker Owner, Rock Point, and Dreamfinders, so it's a fairly typical structure within homebuilding and residential real estate, whereas a homebuilding operation may not want, may not have the ability to finance a large acquisition such as Looking Glass, which the remaining number of homes is over almost 1,800 homes. And so, what they will do is identify a partner that will effectively purchase the property, and then finance that acquisition for the homebuilder, and then as the property reaches certain points, in this case, final plat, that then, those neighborhoods will then be transferred to the homebuilder to execute, develop, and build out the neighborhood. So, hopefully that, I'm sure there'll be some additional questions, but hopefully that gives you a quick overview, and I can answer any additional questions that you may all have.
Excellent. Thanks, sir. We're going to start with Councilmember Barrington with any questions.
So, at the, at a couple of the study sessions, I know the original structure was a little confusing, but I think we got that cleared up, and we will, at least, I will feel better knowing that you've been with this project since the dawn of time of Parker. Yeah. No, you've been, you understand what's going on there, so I think that makes everyone feel better, at least me, I said. But, you know, you've provided 14 days' advance notice, and I think that, I think I have everything I need.
Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you for coming before council and giving your comments to us. And I think Mr. Maloney had correctly identified at the beginning of this process that we needed to have an explanation of the interrelationship between the developers and the LLCs. And so, that's when we had chatted with Mr. Maloney to go back and clarify those relationships, because it's very important to understand for liability purposes that there are companies, which companies are liable for what products at a certain point in time. So, you came before us tonight, and you explained this to us, and Mr. Maloney also had come back around with us and explained it as well at a study session, so thank you very much to both of you.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions. The previous discussions that we had created a great clarity for the council, as well as myself, and I'm happy to see Matt's still going to continue on, hopefully till the end of time, or all the lots have been sold, one of the two.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I agree with my fellow council members, no questions.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. As I said, it's have to ask the big question, and I think, Matt, you touched on it, I mean, this has been years upon years upon years, and lots and lots of work to get to this final step, and the fear, of course, was, we don't want to lose it all, we don't want it to go away, and I think that you answered that question. Jim, is there any risk that we could lose all of the obligations, that the dwelling units are going to change, or we are fully safe here with everything, that we're going to get this last bit of Parker built out the way that it was designed to be built out?
Well, we certainly can't control the ownership, but what we do have is an annexation agreement. It's been recorded against the property, and that's your ultimate protection, and building permits will not be issued until securities are in place and property is platted. So, I think you have the security moving forward, no matter who the owner is, but it's good to know that we have a sound owner, and personally, I'm happy Matt's still going to be there managing the project.
Yeah, I second that, and I must say, and I think Matt knows, I'm a stickler for folks coming in front of us, and I think Laura touched on it, and I appreciate you being here. There's some times that outside firms and out-of-state firms take it for granted this is just going to happen, and I appreciate you taking the time and coming down and standing in front of us today.
Thanks. And I just want to say, I apologize that Dreamfinders and Rock Point aren't here. They had some conflicts, but I wanted to make sure that I was here to explain this for you, so.
Means a lot. Thank you, sir.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open this for public comment at 8:03. Anybody in the room wishing to make a comment? None? Danette, do we have anyone online?
No, there were no public comments, ma'am.
All right, then we'll bring it back to council and close the public comment at 8:03. Counsel, any further questions, comments? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on Resolution 21-033.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 21-033, sir.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. And that resolution passes unanimously. With no other business for the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Dyak. Please cast your last vote.
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we adjourned at 8:04.[1775.83]